Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our September work session here at the Borough of Gettysburg. I do have a few announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg was conducted immediately following the adjournment of the September 12, 2022, monthly general business meeting consistent with Section 708A1, Section 70882, Section 708A4, and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act. An executive session of the Borough Council will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly work session consistent with Section 708A1, Section 708A2, Section 708A4, and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes: One, to discuss matters involving the employment, the terms and conditions of employment, and the policies and procedures for complaints relating to borough employees; Two, to provide informational updates and discuss strategy related to the negotiation of a new collective bargaining agreement with the International Brotherhood of the Teamsters Local Number 776 with the Gettysburg Borough Police Employees Labor Organization; Three, to receive and consider information relative to the proposed decision and order entered by the hearing examiner of the Pennsylvania Labor Relations Board in case number PFC 2042E, captioned Teamsters Local Union Number 776, the Borough of Gettysburg; and Four, to receive informational updates on pending grievances filed by Teamsters Local Number, Local Union Number 776 on behalf of the Gettysburg Borough and Police Employees Labor Organization; and Five, to review and to discuss matters of borough business which if conducted in the public could lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right, that brings us to public comments. I'd like to remind everyone for public comments. We will need you to state your name and address. Limit yourself to five minutes. Our first public comment session is for items that are on the agenda, okay? And if you can use the podium, that helps our listeners at home. In the work session, Mr. Yunetti, I kind of expect you're here about the zoning text revision?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're all going to make public comment now. If there are specific things as we get into it, we can also sometimes in work sessions have a little bit of dialogue as well.
Yes, sir. So, good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Bernie Yunetti. I'm a local attorney, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the American Legion Post 202. I'm here to talk to you briefly about the proposed zoning in the TC or Tourist Commercial District. Specifically, only one of the sections is of concern to me, and that's down on the Sixth Street and East Middle properties. So, there's three properties. I think one's residential already, and you want to convert the east to residential. The one across the street that goes up against the creek beside the sewage treatment plant is vacant. But again, I'm here on behalf of the Legion who is requesting that you don't rezone that into a residential purpose following its current use. The building as it sits right now, I've been told, is worth, if you want to sell it, right around a million dollars. It can be converted into a restaurant, meet the tourist and commercial purpose, and if the Legion had to fold because of financial reasons, then they could go ahead and sell the building, perhaps downsize, relocate somewhere else. If you were to rezone it into residential, again, I don't have experts with me tonight, but I've consulted with them. Basically, they'd have to pay to, someone would have to pay to tear the building down and then rebuild homes on that site, that the current building, as it's constructed, just doesn't lend itself to a retrofit. Then you have the fact that there are, the sewage treatment plants right across the street. So, if you were just going to sell it as raw land, you may get $100, $150,000, which is a far cry from a million because there'll be demolition costs involved. Also, I just would remind council, and I know all of you know, across the street is Gettysburg Municipal Authority's sewage treatment plant. You've got the Borough Building right across the street. Right up the street, you've got the VFW, which is another social club that isn't subject to this change. Further up on the right, at the intersection, there's NAPA. You cross the intersection, you've got an eye doctor. The next building is going to be the Gettysburg Municipal Authority Administrative Offices. That building's set to be purchased on August 12 by the authority, and a major commercial investment's going to be put in to that. Then there are a couple of residential properties in between there and Sixth, or Fifth Street. But then you've got Chemstra Financial Planners, you've got a Bed and Breakfast, and all these seven or eight properties are all commercial. And to just put a tab on the Legion building that it has to go to residential, I'm not sure that there aren't some unintended consequences that whoever drafted this probably had good thoughts in mind, probably wanted to get things all residential down there, but it's not going to happen. The investment that the municipal authorities are going to put in is, again, over a million dollars into that property. So, I don't think the Borough wants to move, the sewage treatment plant's not going to move, the Borough shed's not going to move. I mean, all those things are going to be down there. So, I'm not sure about that. Just as a reminder, back in 1998, your predecessors here rezoned this property. It used to be the site of C. E. Williams' contractors, and when they moved out, the Legion bought it, but before that, the Borough Council rezoned it into the fact that in the Tourist Commercial District, a social club or lodge was a permitted use. I mean, they made special accommodations to be able to put the Legion there. And the Legion relocated from Middle Street, went down there, built a seven-digit facility, and now they're faced with the prospect that, you know, if bad luck came upon them, they couldn't meet their bills, I don't know, for whatever reason, that, and they had to close up, that it would be forced to become residential, which would financially kill the fraternal organization. So, that's basically my comments. I just don't know that someone thought ahead, and if they looked at the whole area, I mean, with how many other commercial uses that are not going to be changed, that it really just, I don't know, I think it's just common sense that it doesn't make sense that if that particular parcel should be left alone. So, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I just wanted to let you know, I, the planning commission, I think, looked at it but didn't make any recommendations, and I don't have anything from them, but I'm just asking you that you reconsider the rezoning of the one lot where the Legion is currently located. It is a fraternal organization. They have lots of military ceremonies in there. There is a social part of it, but that's not really what it's about. So, thank you very much for your time.
Yep. Public comment. Items on the agenda.
I'll have a nice seat. Good evening. My name is Rosemary Maher. I live at 44 West High, and I want to start by saying a thank you to Ms. Marshall and Mr. Eastman for formalizing the zoning text amendment event venue regarding the Gettysburg Academy. You've made a big effort to limit crowd size, number of events per month, clarification of what constitutes an event, one day, not a three-day weekend, limitations for standing vehicles, i.e. shuttles. I continue to have some issues with safety, the amount of increased street traffic that will occur, crowd noise, crowd control, and lighting in a residential neighborhood, and the availability of flush toilets for guests. I'll just go through specifically my concerns tied to this zoning text amendment that was done. Number four, there's a clarification of dumpster location. I would think it should be a minimum of 20 feet from another residential property. Also, what is the time limitation for clearing the dumpsters, and when is cleaning going to be needed, and what is kind of the schedule for cleaning? 5B is a maximum attendance with 100 people, including staff. How will this be controlled? At a recent meeting, I mentioned two events that I had attended recently, where the hostesses in each case sent out invitations and asked for RSVPs. In each case, there were double the number of people that attended the event that had actually been to the RSVP. So, it's just kind of a question. How does that work? And who should the neighbors contact if the event lasts long after nine o'clock on Sundays, or 10 o'clock on Friday or Saturday? These time limits is stated include cleanup. Same concern for music. That's eight o'clock on Sunday, nine o'clock Friday and Saturday, which, you know, what's to enforce that, I guess, is my question. And lighting, number 7F, noise and lighting is mentioned but not clarified. There appears to be no reference to available flush toilets for crowds of this size. The council heard from the Gettysburg Municipal Authority and the Uniform Construction Code Enforcement Officer about required indoor plumbing for this number of customers. These standards should be part of the special exception approval.
Okay. Public comment.
I'm Sue Sipperly. I live at 314 North Stranton Street in Gettysburg, and for a change, I'm talking about the sidewalk ordinance revisions. It's good to get the sidewalk ordinance back on the active agenda after being tabled for a long time. I have some specific thoughts and questions as shown on the attached pages, but in addition to those revisions, there are some things in the existing ordinance that could be enforced, and they really have not been. In downtown area, it's about sidewalk clutter and pedestrian pathways, and in other parts of town, there are roller coaster sidewalks that bulge due to tree roots that make them impassable with a stroller or wheelchair and create tripping hazards. There are also areas that have no sidewalk at all on one side of the street. If there are funding programs that would help owners repair or construct in these situations, it would provide a public benefit. Some of these costs can be prohibitive for individual property owners, including tree removal and that sort of thing. So, some streets in town like South Street is great, and that was at no additional cost to the owners there. So, it'd be beneficial if individual property owners that need to make revisions or repairs could maybe get some help somehow. Second page, down at the bottom, definition of sidewalk, it says a portion of the street that's between the curb lines and the adjacent property lines. And I imagine, my deed, and I imagine a lot of other ones, say that my property line is the face of the curb. So, you might have to take, I realize there's a right-of-way for the sidewalk, but it's not the property line. So, that might need to improve the wording on that. And 21207, these vegetated strips, and also the, there's a provision that if the sidewalk is less than five feet wide, you have to provide little bump outs for passing, like if you had two people in wheelchairs going down the sidewalk, they need to be able to pull off. And I was just curious as to whether something like a driveway or a private walkway would solve that issue. And also, it applies to every 200 feet, which is much larger than most lot width, so that just kind of needs some clarification. The one that really bothers me is number seven in that same section. That if you're repairing your sidewalk or replacing it, a minimum of one shade tree per 20 linear feet of sidewalk shall be provided if you have at least a three-foot strip to do it in. And some people have that, and some people don't. So, why do the people who have a three-foot wide strip, why would they be required to plant trees? That's an expense, liability, maintenance, and what if they don't want trees in front of their property? So, they just want to fix the sidewalk. So, that seemed like a way to promote tree planting, but not, it didn't seem like the Borough might not even have the authority to require a homeowner to plant a tree. Page seven, there was a thing about flower boxes and how far they can protrude from the building, but there's also the consideration of how much space is left for the pedestrians to walk. Number 21224, I think it's an existing paragraph A, that merchandise and displays have to be up next to the building. And I just put a comment there, yes, it says including signs. It's hard to walk, open car doors when signs inhabit the sidewalk, and it's visual clutter, and it just seems to be multiplying. And also, there's a section about merchandise, displays, goods, and signs must be removed from the sidewalk. And I don't know, let me just finish the one comment on that page. There's one more comment on that page. I was just wondering about the coolers and drink machines that are on York Street, for example, because they take up space, and they're not visually compatible with a historical setting. So, I think you may already have the ability to enforce that. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Scott English, 1210 Pumping Station Road, property owner, 6668 West High Street. I received the draft ordinance for the events venue, and I have a few concerns, specifically Part 15, General and Supplemental Regulations, Number 5, Operational Requirement, Paragraph C. Over the past 11 months and multiple meetings, we've discussed limiting the use of large outdoor tents on the property to twice a month, not all outdoor activities. This draft reads that I would be limited to any and all outdoor activities, to include any outdoor activities associated with indoor events, to twice a month. This is very unreasonable, as I have a large side yard that is associated with the main structure. There are many significant Gettysburg Academy milestones in history that I would like to share with the public that take place outside the building. If I have indoor events, it appears this regulation is stating my guests will not be allowed to experience and enjoy the outdoor grounds. Again, this is unreasonable, especially since the property is located within Elm Street overlay district, mixed business use district, a zoning district that's existed in this borough since 2007, that already allows for daycare centers, restaurants, and other mixed-use businesses that have associated outdoor activities. As you know, this is a unique property within the borough, is one of the few, very few parcels with a large outdoor space, which I, which is why I'm making this request. The current language seems to specifically target and affect my properties, as very few other parcels have the option of outdoor activities, and the current ordinance draft restricts this use and limits opportunities for the community and tourists to experience. My plans include licensed town and battlefield guide presentations throughout the year that involve discussion of battle events that took place outside the building, on the property, including the seminary, the college, the Adams County Anti-Slavery Society, Battlefield Hospital temporary burials, as well as 150th Pennsylvania Regiment Battle Flag capture on the front porch. My specific request would be to reword the draft ordinance section, Paragraph 5, Subparagraph C, to, I have three options that I've shown you in my statement, to hold outdoor large tenant events, parentheses, wedding, limited to 24 events per year. These 24 events should be left to the discretion of the property owner. I will not be holding outdoor events during the winter months and need to focus my business opportunities during the summer tourist months. 24 events per year, not limited to 22 times a month. Or reinstate the initial council draft text of limiting outdoor large tenant events to twice a month, not all outdoor activity. Or number three, limited outdoor activities with a combination of alcohol and music to twice a month. Limiting the use of all outdoor activities to two times a month would create an unsurmountable financial hardship to me as a business owner. The purpose of my ordinance requests it to promote outdoor activities, increase tourism, which is a benefit to all. Limiting all outdoor activities does not allow me to sustain my business, creating a financial hardship, as other permitted businesses are not limited as such, especially within the Elm Street overlay district. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your service to the Borough of Gettysburg.
Public comment. All right, seeing no further public comment, we'll move on to new business. Our first item involves the Pennsylvania Municipal League Resolutions Committee.
I don't think we need to spend a whole lot of time on this agenda item tonight. I just wanted to remind the council that next, at the end of next week, some staff members are going to be attending the Pennsylvania Municipal League Annual Summit in Pittsburgh. The council has appointed me your representative to the Resolutions Committee. Again, PML is your statewide organization that advocates on behalf of statewide legislation that would positively affect local municipalities throughout the Commonwealth. This year, the PML Legislative Committee has forwarded 12 resolutions for your consideration. If you had a chance to review them, I think this would be, what I will be asked to do is to represent, whether that would be for in the affirmative or not, to support each one of these resolutions when it comes time for the Resolutions Committee to vote. So, if there's any opposition from council, this would be the time to instruct me to vote in the affirmative or contrary, in opposition to any one of these resolutions. There are 12, again, again, there are 12 here. There are some that I think would probably be of more interest for the council. Number 10, for example, is the opposition of a gas tax holiday. Given the financial strain that the country is undergoing at the, at this time, various representatives at the state and federal level have proposed a gas tax holiday. PML is actually suggesting to oppose this because this would negatively impact PennDOT's revenue streams, for example, to repair our roads and bridges. The other is Resolution 11, Municipal Police Recruitment Retention Funding, statewide effort to augment our public safety sector. And of note also is Resolution 12, the Municipalities Authorities Act does not allow the inception of authorities related to fire and EMS services. So, PML is proposing a resolution to advocate for amending the Authorities Act so that counties can incorporate authorities. so that counties can incorporate authorities to provide fire and EMS services at county level. Uh, we've, we've talked about this in various forms over the years where joint efforts to, uh, provide those types of services would be beneficial. So, uh, Mr. President, I don't know if you wanna go through each one of these or if you just kinda wanna have a discussion if there's any opposition to any of these. Uh, I'll turn it over to you at this point.
Yeah, I guess I would, I'd ask that you go sequentially if you can, but if there are strong opinions about any of the matters, now would be the, the time to express those. Get a chance to review them. I mean, I think the, a few that he highlighted, that Mr. Gable highlighted are probably, um, specifically the municipal police recruitment retention and funding, the public safety authorities are things that, you know, um, are worth, uh, considering supporting. You know, some of the other matters, if they, they come to pass, I think they come to pass. You know, if the Commonwealth, for instance, determines to recreationalize marijuana, if they made that decision, then, yeah, I think I would support the, the concept of the local governments having a share of any taxation. But that, you know, that's kind of a if-then type discussion.
To add a little nuance to what President Heiser just spoke about, if the, the state were to begin taxing the use of recreational marijuana, this resolution will be specific to the benefit of municipalities with police forces. So it would not just be, um, say, neighbors around us that don't have police forces would not benefit from this type of legislation.
Any strong opinions either way on any specific items? The nomination of candidates in third-class cities. Which I did find interesting, but not really applicable to our situation here. Okay, um, not hearing any, I think we can move on to our zoning text amendments. Uh, consideration, discussion of the, uh, the first one is the events venue. It's a text amendment rather than map amendment.
So Harry and I, uh, we took the language that was, um, last clarified by fellow counsel on June twenty-seventh. And, uh, we didn't make any changes to the intent of the language that we provided. We just cleaned up a couple of conflicts that existed and clarified some of the, um, the definitions and also, um, the language to ensure that it was clear what council's intent was. Um, I did, after receiving comments from Scott English, go back and revisit that, um, video to make sure that council wasn't just talk, specifically talking about tented events and there was no, um, mention in the April or Ju- June workshop meetings that specified tented events. So, um, I just wanted to make sure, like, we didn't change any of, of what council had already, um, kind of discussed. So you'll see that there's a, an expanded definition of events venue use, um, which clarifies actually some of the points, I think, that, um, Susan Lee had brought up previously by adding the statement, um, for the purpose of leasing the same on a temporary basis. So it's clear that it's not just, um, a business that has events, like the Heritage Center might have events, but that the, that it's, it's to be, um, that it's a facility used to lease for events. And so that kind of provides that clarity that distinguishes a business that also has events from a business that is having events.
Does everyone understand that distinction? So, you know, leasing essentially means the same as renting here. Is that fair?
Yes, that would be fair.
So the next changes are, um, in relation to, um, there's some, I don't wanna say legalese, but we've made some legalese-related, uh, adjustments to standards such as minimal partial size, um, just clarifying that, that language, that it's real property, that there are accessory activity and, uh, that may include accessory activities associated with use. Clarify the language requiring that the use should be conducted primarily within the principal building. But that outdoor activities are an accessory to that use. And then, um, just for you, we had, in those meetings, we discussed screening for dumpsters. And early on, it was decided we would use the SALDO language. So I just highlighted there that that is the language from the SALDO for dumpsters. Obviously, the SALDO doesn't apply to a use change because it's not a land development or subdivision. And so bringing it into the zoning ordinance here applies that standard that we would apply as if it was a new development or a new, um, land development plan. And then the other sort of, uh, the biggest other revision, uh, is in relation to the annual management plan. And that's just a lot of language cleanup, um, relating to, um, repeated noncompliance or satisfactorily addressing noncompliance issues. But there's no, um, other than the definition, and which even the definition is really clarifying, there's no actual change to the intent of what council had directed us to. We were just sort of, um, cleaning up the language and making it, I think, hopefully, preventing confusion in terms of mixing, you know, established and new use and whether or not existing uses that have events would fall under those, et cetera.
All right, so I suppose my, uh, my question to the council would be, um, based upon really everything that we have had input, uh, wise from the public and everything you've considered since we had these discussions and now statement and draft, um, with the public comment we received. Are there any items that any member would like to revisit in here that you believe there was a misunderstanding of what we had discussed or you've had some sort of a change of heart or anything of that nature? Or are we okay with this language as it has been prepared? And okay in the sense that it reflects what we had discussed and you still feel as a majority that this is how we wanna proceed? So that makes sense. But I know there's some things that are split, but, you know, yeah.
Well, I just think overall it's a little restrictive of the use of the property in general, and as I stated before, I'm not gonna support it this way.
I too think it is very restrictive. And I think tonight, in public comments, some very valid concerns, uh, logical and practical concerns were brought forward. And, uh, some suggestions of possible changes were brought forward in a document tonight. I would like time to overlay those suggestions and comments with the ordinance itself. And so, other than thinking that it is restrictive, I would not be ready tonight without being able to study these, um, more thoroughly to state absolutely what would happen, what I would do.
Okay.
Did we decide to strike the language on toileting? I'm not seeing anything in here about sanitation.
I think that the decision we made was that we would be dealing with public toilets as a separate matter. Not public toilets, I should say, portable toilets as a separate, as a separate matter because it came to light through part of this that we have a proliferation of public, well, portable apartment. Many of them are public, de facto, um, but portable toilets throughout the borough. So it's not that it wouldn't be addressed necessarily, but, but it would not be part of this ordinance.
It would be addressed in something else.
Yeah, and then we kind of had a discussion about, and we got into like what's appropriate and not things that have come to, to pass in the past few years and, you know, maybe it's not, some things that are existing now probably aren't the best. So that's kind of a separate discussion from this, though.
I agree with Mrs. Butterfield. I, I would like a little bit of time to look through all of this in comparison to the recent draft. However, I will say that, um, I think that I was under the assumption of, when we were talking about tents, that it was talking about a large event, if you will, the hu- the hundred max. And for such a historical site and such a historical town, we have tour, we have tour guides and, and they'll literally stop in front of your, they'll give a tour in front of your property and talk about it, and they'll have like fifteen people with them. Whether they asked you or not, they're doing it. And so I just feel like if they're willing to work and partner with such a historical site and have, you know, a tour, for example, um, a gathering, if you will, and there's like twenty to thirty people and it happens to be on the weekend, which we've already stated in the draft, that's not necessarily a tented event. Is that counting against their, I, I don't know. I just have a lot of questions about that. I think, I think it's very restrictive as it is right now.
I'm actually okay with the restrictive language with the Elm Street overlay. Because I think it's such a residential neighborhood, I think there's a lot of quality of life issues that would, uh, would be problematic if that would go forward. But other places, it, it may be too restrictive. So I'm kind of, that's where I am.
Okay, yeah, and, and one of the things I think that was important here is the, the way that the, the vent venue use was defined. You know, and that's, the leasing aspect of it is, is pretty critical uh, in terms of how a lot of existing facilities, um, the Heritage Center comes to mind and things of that nature function. But what I'm kinda gathering here is that we'll be revisiting this in October. You know, so to make sure that we have a, a reasonable way to proceed forward. I think that the most important thing that I'm gonna ask is, and we had some this evening. You know, I gather from Mr. Carr that, you know, we're looking at the, the discussion of, you know, outdoor events versus tented events and, you know, what kind of constitutes counting towards that limit. And, um, there are some, some points here raised that I think maybe really did not come up in our earlier discussions. So I think that that's probably the best way to use everyone's time, is to have this discussion again in October with, if you're looking to make changes, I would request that you have some specific, you know, items. Um, I know that in some cases, it's gonna be such a broad disagreement with the ordinance that it's not, I'm not asking someone to show up, John, I'm not asking you to bring a list of twenty things. Okay. But if you think there's a handful of things that get you over the line to seeing this as a, an appropriate balance, then I'll, you know, we'll have this loss in here hopefully and we can get ourselves to a place where we can pass an ordinance. Um, but if not, we can, uh, go back to drawing, the drawing board, basically.
Well, I mean, the way I read this, he can't have a ghost tour on his property in the yard. But yet, when I come back into town at night, I see ghost tours in front of private homes. I know one guy who just hates them, they leave trash on his property and everything else. He talks to me about it all the time. There's no say-so in it because the ghost tour people tell him we're on the public street. So, you know, this man's trying to run a business, he can't have a ghost tour with thirty people. But other people who don't have a brick-and-mortar building can run them up and down the public street and goes to Chris's comments about quality of life. If they stop in front of your trap, in front of your property and trash it up and everything else, they're, they're listening out on the quality of life too, and we really haven't addressed that even though we've tried to over the years. So I mean, that's, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the one thing I would comment here, and we, we kinda got into that part of it, you know, with what, uh, was provided this evening, is a lot of this, you know, we think of events, we are thinking of, you know, I kinda envisioned the, the ten event maybe for, for lack of better terminology, about the wedding and that, that type of thing that we've been discussing. Uh, and then it's interesting that, you know, you could have people, basically, once you step outside, it's an outdoor event.
But yet, it's, it would be gated and it's on his own property. I, I just.
So, yeah, like I'm, I'm, I'm hearing.
If I, if I had a, a property like that right now, I'll tell you right now that I would be doing, it might not be a wedding event with a hundred people. But if I could partner with historical tours and the ghost tours and the various things of such a historical property, I'd be doing it. I would be doing it. In my own fenced-in yard, I would be doing it.
Well, it's not a fenced-in.
But it could be. If he follows all of the, it could be a fenced. We can, we can all put fence, fences of a certain height with permission, right?
So I, I think that that is, that's a discussion we're gonna end up having again in October. I just wanna make sure that we are proceeding towards some sort of a conclusion. So I can appreciate that, you know, everyone wants to balance the input we had this evening and, and get that figured out, but we do need to get it figured out. That's just the, the state of things. But, yeah, it is, it's not lost on me that you could stand on High Street with twenty-six people. But if you walked into the yard, now you can't. But then at the, it, it, there's just a lot of, and this whole thing has been very much a balancing act. And I think everyone's kinda seen that, that's the attempt. It's a unique property, but it exists where it does. And, you know, that's the, the whole combination of things. You know, it's a large property, but there are adjacent residential uses, there are adjacent uses opposite the street that are otherwise. It, it makes it difficult and this has been challenging to navigate.
This, this is challenging. We do need to revisit because I, I swear, I think tonight is the first time we've ever talked about this in the context of thirty-person ghost tours. This has always been hundred-person weddings.
Right, yeah, I never really thought about.
Completely different scenario that we had not been even discussing for months and months and months.
I didn't think about the concept that, I mean, we've been saying ghost tours, but if you had, you know, the town guides or someone like that, I, I, I mean, my house routinely, the house next to me has a cannon shell in it. Right at, you know, two eighteen, so, like, it's very normal to see the Segway stop in the middle of the street pointing. The, the town guide or battlefield guide, I guess they would be, maybe a battlefield guide doing this, like stopping on the sidewalk and pointing, like, it's not unusual. But then at the same time, I'm not sure that I'd want those same thirty people in my neighbor's yard next to the other side of the fence either.
But they can do it on the sidewalk right now.
That's the whole, right.
They can do it on the sidewalk right now, anybody who could see it.
Yeah, the sidewalk's not like right next to my backyard. There is difference between your backyard and your front yard, right? Like the, how you use the space and everything, so.
That's right, a corner lot.
That's, uh, unless you have a corner lot, that's true.
Which, this is a corner.
That's true, and this is a corner lot. All right, I was thinking of the adjacent. So we'll revisit that in October. Uh, the uh, tourist commercial district changes, this deals with the zoning map amendment. Mr. Berger had asked that we revisit this, and of course, you have Mr. Unetti here this evening. Ms. Marshall, do you want me to introduce this or do you wanna discuss this? Look, or, or Chris, do you wanna? I mean, basically, I think what Mr. Unetti was here and kind of explained, but there's an, the kind of the other aspect to it that wasn't really mentioned is that the, the Legion Lot is uniquely in the tourist commercial district currently in a way that if you look at the actual map, the district kind of wraps around to get to the Legion Lot. Now, the other aspect that Ms. Marshall and I have discussed about this is that there is an institutional zone adjacent. So all the, the other businesses and facilities that Mr. Unetti was discussing. businesses and facilities that Mr. Unetti was discussing that aren't affected, they're not affected because they're in the institutional zone currently. And, you know, we were kind of looking at this of, all right, like this whole Hanover Street corridor. But this little area of Middle Street is very unusual. And I would bargain to say, I would really wonder if zoning existed when this was built. Because there is such a smattering of different things happening in the same area. And I think that, you know, really, you see current things that are zoned institutional that probably should be zoned some sort of general commercial.
Zoning was in, in effect when the American Legion went in.
Right, no, I mean, like some of these other, like when you're going down from the Napa, you have like the Napa and a house, and then this and a house, and it's just like, wow, this is, this is interesting. And the kind of the discussion that Ms. Marshall and I had was, you know, how do you address this, deal with the, the issue that's been raised and, and candidly issues that maybe have not been raised involving what will now be the GMA building and the eye care, you know, office and everything else, without going full bore and creating a new zone. Right, because that was one of the things that we kind of batted around, it's like, you know, how do you, do you wanna do this within the current structure? And within the current structure, it almost seems like carving out a, a new general commercial district in that area would be more appropriate. It, it seems to me what they did in nineteen ninety-eight was they, they were like, well, this'll work and it's close, so we'll loop this around. And maybe that wasn't really the correct decision at the time either. And general commercial would accommodate their needs also, but also fit these various other offices and, you know, I have no concept of how long Napa's been there, but it seems pretty permanent to me.
Am I correct in that this section of the tourist commercial we're looking at only has one residential property in it? On the corner.
That's an active resident, yeah.
Of Sixth and Hanover?
Yes.
Yeah, originally this looked at more of the, just the Hanover Street corridor is, is generally residential home-based business in nature. As opposed to being, because commercials say York Street is.
So Mr. Unetti's argument is not lost on me. And we can't, you know, rezone everything else in the, in that, that's in that little bubble and leave just one property
Right.
non-contiguous in its own, so I, I would say we just leave that as is and just make the corrections or the changes to the tourist commercial district at the south end of town.
So I do wanna note too that there is a, a property owner on York Street that's, that was very much looking forward to the zoning change and having their property changed from tourist commercial to general commercial because of the provision of boarding house use in the general commercial district.
That'd be the hotel?
So. If the council intends to, I, I, I mean, I guess I would question what, not just the Legion property, but the vacant property across the, across from Sixth Street, what would council envision to be the highest and best use of that property, a commercial property or residential property? Because I think that that could also play into the, sort of how it's handled in a, in a larger sense. I think that most of the businesses on the same side of the street of Legion would be conforming if it was general commercial, although the Legion would not. But would you want to include the vacant lot? Or would you still want that to go back to R two?
That's closer to the sewer plant, right?
It's, it's been, whatever, one of the reasons nobody's ever built there was because it's next to the sewer plant.
It's tourist commercial currently.
Okay, well, we still, nobody built there because it's next to the sewer plant. So I mean, making it R two, you know, that's not gonna really help.
It's also partially in the floodplain.
Yeah, that was a property they put in a lot of fill when the middle school was built. Yeah, my thought when I look at that whole area is you go past basically the, the point there, is you start to go down Hanover Street, it's residential the whole way. And you have some home-based businesses, but they fall within accepted uses within R two. And then you have the potential to get to the end of that, and I understand like the, you know, concept of like best and most use of the parcel, but I'm also looking at the concept of like, you have residential neighborhood, then you could get to the end and suddenly have like a hotel. And it doesn't really make any sense. That whole Hanover Street corridor is kind of the east corridor that's still preserved in that residential type of atmosphere, whereas York Street is, you know, completely commercial essentially. I mean, their residential use is holding on, but they're really kind of holding on. You know, I'd rather have people redeveloping that area than building down Hanover Street in a commercial capacity.
I'm also gonna be asking for a comprehensive rezoning next year.
Okay. Well, that would lend itself more to, to kind of Mr. Moon's suggestion then, but, I mean, I think what we're dealing with on the south end of town is pretty cut and dry. And the more that we have carved into this, the more complex it seems to be. And I'm not sure that there's ever gonna be a very good solution for that segment of East Middle Street.
With what we have currently.
Because it's just such a mixture.
It's a very low traffic commercial area. When you look at the density of the commercial uses, it's actually pretty similar to other general commercial areas, it's just that those are on Carlisle Street, or not Carlisle Street, Chambersburg Street and York Street where it's very high traffic. This is a very low traffic commercial area. And so it doesn't have the same, doesn't jump out at you as being a commercial area, although,
So I guess the question in the interim is, would the Legion's use be permitted under the institutional? So now, so everything else that's there, every other, the VFW and the rest of it wouldn't be permitted to be built today?
So the VFW, the,
Or is it sit?
The borough lot and the GMA are all an institutional. And the VFW would be non-conforming there.
Right.
Across the street, Napa, the eye doctor, the consultants, all of those would be conforming in a general commercial. With the exception of the Legion.
Okay.
But to their point in, you know, their concern being future use of that property, wanting it to be available for commercial, general commercial, you know, would provide a, a wide, a wide list of uses, commercial uses other than social club. Although, a social club would obviously be grandfathered in.
But it includes like restaurants and so forth, that'll all be.
Yeah, I'm just, as long as we don't change it to residential, that's why I asked for, to revisit this, it just, it would severely handicap them from sell, selling it as a residential property, so I would be against if that change.
And it came up with the, the building the GMA bought, that was a concern when the Health Department moved out, because that's an R two district. And they were very limited in what they could use that building for. It just so happens that it was used for offices, GMA has an office, so.
So that significantly impacted their selling price?
I don't, I don't know what it impacts.
But it, but it probably would have, right? Like in theory, the uses were very limited, so in the same type of thinking, right? Kind of paved the way for municipal, worked out for them. Or what other office, you know, someone would have put in, but that's limited. Okay.
Cheaper to build.
What's that?
It's cheaper what we're doing than to build. Because we were looking to build, so we actually got lucky with this property.
Well, I'm glad to see things reused rather than just tearing things down and building new. All right, so what do you folks think?
I agree with Mr. Berger, I'd hate for that to turn into a residential where they, where the American Legion would. I think they do a lot of great work in our community. Before I moved here, the building that I live in now is the, was the old Elks Lodge, and before I moved here, they moved from that building to another building. And then, I don't know if they lost money on the sale or what, but then they went defunct. And we lost the Elks, who also, I think, gave money to various not-for-profits in our community. The Legion also obviously helps a lot of our military retirees and, and currently active duty. I'd like to see that they get the best that they can if, God forbid, they were, would have to sell that building that they're in. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
It was the intent of the borough at that time that that was gonna be more commercial down that way. That's why the street got wider to accommodate more traffic, parking, trucks. I mean, because before that was built, C. Williams came the whole way over to the highway shed, across the alley from C. Williams and Sid Deets Painting. And where Kempster is now was Simpson, the builder. And that whole corner was basically commercial at that time. And then after we put the street through, then they built the townhouses. They're on the corner. And the lot across the street that Enskip owned was vacant. Couldn't sell because it was in the floodplain, so then when they built the middle school, they filled it up. So I mean, lot of mixed uses in that area for a long, long, long time. But residential was never really one of them that was considered.
All right, would people generally be okay with leaving that area as is? We examine the possibility of comprehensive rezoning when it comes to budget time. But still address, well, I think it's quite an obvious issue we have on the Johns Avenue area, get that dealt with. Get that moved forward.
Would you like Harry and I to proceed sort of preparing something for your next meeting so that we can move forward on?
Yeah, it looks like that's the area we're gonna be focusing on. And then this is something we could talk about if we go down the rezoning path comprehensively, that there, there are just too many rocks to pick up here to, to do it in this type of fashion. So. All right. That'll take us on then to the sidewalk ordinance. Just keeps going. This has been a kind of long journey.
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen.
And there were, there were things that came up in public comment that I remember interesting discussions about the requirement that you have that passing area and whose responsibility that becomes. And I remember the planning commission literally spending at least one evening, probably more than that, literally just walking sidewalks in the borough. And, you know, certainly there are a number of existing issues that are just not addressed. And, and that became, at some point in the past, that became sort of the habit to not address these really safety hazards. And then now the expectation has developed among many members of the public that someone will solve it for them. And that's just not always possible for us. So certainly the gas company has done a lot, the, you know, grant monies have done a lot, but at the end of the day, there are a lot of sidewalks that have problems that we certainly have to address, and I was personally never convinced of the, when the curb cutting was being discussed before my time, I was never convinced that that was thinning the sidewalk never seemed to be like a, an actual reasonable, reasonable option. So I'm glad that we're getting to this point.
And so the goal of this, when it started, and this, to pull the remaining sidewalk standards out of the cell down, put them in the sidewalk ordinance. To update the sidewalk ordinance to be compliant with ADA regulations. And then to fill in gaps in regulations that we have had in relation to objects on the sidewalk, et cetera. Harry and I have met to discuss this, we, we spent most of our time on the ticketing portion recently, and we do still have additional reviews, especially with the definitions. There's quite a few definitions that still need quite a bit of work. But I wanted to bring this back to council and kind of get, we got a schedule going with Harry and I in terms of reviewing it, I wanted to get it back on your agenda and back into your into the, into these discussions. And so that we can kind of move forward with this and hopefully get, get this adopted early next year. So the, the points that I, I specifically wanted to bring to your attention, start on page eight, obstruction of sidewalks. These, I think, include some of the biggest changes or revisions from what we have currently in terms of policy for sidewalks. One of the requirements would be to the placement of merchandise displays. And we included signs, but we can remove signs and have that handled through the sign ordinance. Or restricted to the innermost three feet of the sidewalk directly adjacent to the building. And that the merchandise displays must not extend beyond the width of the area the business occupies within the building. Regardless of the width of the business and or the building, no merchandise or display shall occupy more than fifty linear feet of sidewalk. No off-site placement of merchandise shall be permitted, like on sidewalk in front of somebody else's business. All displays, goods, and signs must be removed from the sidewalk during non-business hours or anytime the staff is not physically present at the business. We had some businesses that had kept the lights on, so they didn't have to bring their displays in, but nobody was home. So, and again, we can pull signs out of there and handle that in the sign ordinance if you prefer. Existing standard, no obstruction to hydrants, streetlights, mailboxes, transit stops, or any other public service facility. Clear, unobstructed sidewalk width at least five feet is maintained at all times between permitted objects or displays. And any tree well, parking meter, fire hydrant, trash can, other obstacle. Now, obviously, some of our sidewalks aren't five feet wide, in which case don't put objects on them. If you, if you can't leave at least five feet clearance, whether because your sidewalk isn't wide enough or because your sidewalk is just five feet, there shouldn't be any objects on them. Because chances are, if you're putting an object on, it's in a commercial district where sidewalks are closer to ten or twelve feet, because they need to be given the street furniture, tree wells, pedestrian traffic, outdoor damage, et cetera. Merchandise displays shall not be motorized, electrified, battery powered, illuminated, any fixture or equipment required to display the merchandise shall be minimal and of secondary nature in visibility to the merchandise itself. Essentially, if you're displaying merchandise, it should be merchandise that you see and not the display. Or a pertinent that the merchandise is in or on. And then we included language, we had, I don't know if you remember, a couple of years ago, we were looking at regulating information distribution boxes. This is where we put that, they require a permit. And then some of the standards that were discussed at that time are included here. Innermost three feet of the sidewalk, directly adjacent. Um, innermost three feet of the sidewalk drac- directly adjacent to the building. Business needs to also approve of this. Very similar language to the others. No obstruction to hydrants and other public service facilities. Clear, unobstructed sidewalk width of at least five feet. Again, if you don't have five feet, there shouldn't be a box there. No off-site placement if it's for a specific business. And then if it's in the historic district, um, Harb may place additional conditions as necessary. They might decide this, that isn't something they want to address, but they do, they have the discretion. And they shall not be motorized, electrified, battery powered, or illuminated. Um, and those boxes must be, permits will be revoked if they become ill-maintained or dilapidated. Currently, there's no, once they're there, they're there. We don't really have the means to kind of make people maintain them or remove them. Um, if it's not filled on a regular basis, so if they're just sitting empty all the time. Or if people fill it with garbage because it's sitting empty usually. Uh, and then there's details on how that permit would work. So, does anybody have any questions or is there any discussion regarding displays and merchandise?
I, I would favor keeping the sidewalk signs in here, even apart from the signage ordinance. I mean, we're, we're talking specifically about making sure the sidewalks are passable. So, let's just cover everything that might obstruct a sidewalk. That's my two cents on that. Something I would like some clarity on is, um, and I'd like to see language about it, is, uh, who homeowners can use to do sidewalk replacement work. And I say that because my next door neighbors called, uh, one of your predecessors multiple times over a period of years trying to repair their sidewalk. And were repeatedly told, yes, you can get a permit to replace buckling sidewalk, but you have to use a borough-approved vendor. And there is no list of borough-approved vendors, as far as anybody could tell.
We never had borough-approved vendors.
Right. So, they were left not being able to repair their buckling sidewalk. So, I would like to see language that talks about, you know, what, you know, what qualifies for somebody who's capable of doing this work and, and to what specification. I mean, I did see in there, it says, you know, if you want to know, uh, the specifications on the surfacing, you have to talk to Robbie or to the engineer. Um, I, I think we would just list it, right? If it's that the concrete has to hit a certain PSI or whatever it is, let's put it in there.
So, the specs for, um, the borough specifications is, includes not just sidewalks, it's streets, and it's pretty significant. Um, and it changes with when there's, um, you know, better materials become available, et cetera. And so, we, we have that as more of an attachment, um, document, quote unquote, for that reason. And it's hard for that. Also, it's very difficult for the average person looking at it to understand it. Um, so it is good to have that conversation with Robbie or Chad when you're talking about sidewalk specs. We do not in this ordinance require a borough vendor. Uh, if you're replacing your sidewalk, you would apply for a permit for that. Robbie works with you closely, um, to make sure that you understand the specifications so that, and make sure that he understands the scope of the project. And so, I don't know if you want to speak to, in terms of, um, whether there should be limits on who can replace a sidewalk.
Well, homeowner can replace it as long as they follow the specifications. We have different sidewalk details.
Like they can do the work themselves without a contractor?
As long as they, as long as they have a certificate of liability insurance.
Yeah, and this is the thing that, like, I think when this came, I think that the predecessor we're discussing was making a significant error.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Because in a government setting, it's really not appropriate at all to point to a list of vendors. I understand people's frustration. This often comes up with Harb, right? Like, I don't know, like, what do I use? Can you give me a list? And it's, it's really about knowing, okay, who meets the specifications that appear, whether it's in a Harb setting, like somebody going, well, who builds a, you know, the correct, who, who locally builds the correct windows? Right? That would meet your, a- and most contractors, general contractors are gonna know, well, here are kind of your options, right? You can talk to these different people, these are, but it's not to say you couldn't find someone in a different state that would build something that, that met the qualification. And kind of the same here. Um, I think that most homeowners' ability to conduct the construction of a sidewalk that meets the spec would be stretched at the least. Um, but it's not to say it couldn't be done.
Right.
I, I guess what I'm.
And, and, and that's all through the inspection process too, because when they, when they dig it out, I inspect it. When they form it, I inspect it. When they pour it, I inspect it.
Yeah, I, I guess what I'm getting at is I would like to demystify the process for the homeowner, right? You know, like, if they call you and say, I want a permit to replace a single block of sidewalk or a stretch of sidewalk, you know, I would like to be able to hand them something that says, this is everything you need to know about getting it done. And, you know, step one, call your vendor. Step two, call Robbie, you know, et cetera. But like, you know, and have it spelled out what's required.
So, it's almost making like a handout from the existing specification. It's kind of, that's what it sounds like you're discussing.
I, I, I'd like to demystify the process for the homeowner. And the other thing, the only other thing that jumps out at me too is I, I would love to see language in here. I don't know if this is practical or practicable. You know, when we do work and like when we're doing curb cuts for ADA access or whatever, uh, I'm thinking specifically about all the curb cuts around the intersection of Chambersburg and Washington where the street lamps were left at their existing elevations and then the curb cuts were done around them. And what we've, was created on all four corners is gigantic trip hazards. Um, I, I would like to see something in there that says that when we are doing work on our own stuff, we won't, we won't do that. We will make sure that the entire walkway is, um, navigable.
Well, we would have had, we would have had to redesign the streetlights and, and change the streetlights to meet ADA. That's why those, that's why those cuts were around those traffic signals, because they were put back.
You know, I get that. I get that. And, and I think in the future, we should.
Right.
Uh, and, and I've had, I've had conversations with Chad about this in the past. There's certain areas where we've done curb cuts and truncated domes that are technically compliant.
Right.
But don't actually serve the purpose, right? So, like, if the truncated domes are there for people who are, uh, have low vision or unsighted, but it's six feet to the left of the actual intersection where the inner, where the sidewalk ends, but they're not serving their purpose and we've wasted money. And we're also putting somebody in danger. So, we, we should do it smart when we do it. That'd be my.
So, the problem that intersections created by powers above us.
Yes, that's come up before that.
I was gonna say, that's definitely PennDOT. Yeah, no doubt about that. Um, yes.
I agree with what you said earlier that over the years, attention has dramatically swayed from, um, safety issues, buckling sidewalks, walking is safety, to display issues. And, um, the wording that you've had today really emphasizes that heavy on display and signage, sidewalk signs that you talked about last time, Chad. We also, uh, as far as the safety issues that Matt touched on, in northern borough right now, there are issues with mature trees, the roots disrupting the sidewalks to unsafe situations. And if the tree is on one property, which is happening up there, but it disrupts the sidewalk of another property, then whose responsibility is that? And I know they've been harping to Robbie about, uh, some of those residents up, up there. But I think we need to, as Matt has just said, really also focus on residential sidewalk safety and not completely, um, worry about display and signs. And passage is an issue and that's affected by the displays. But the sidewalk safety buckling, it should be equally addressed, I believe.
Yeah, and that is addressed in the ordinance. All the, under essentially, the ordinance requires that, um, through various parts in the ordinance, that the sidewalks be ADA compliant. And obviously elevation, anything over a two-inch, um, rise is, is not ADA compliant. I brought, the, the reason that we were talking about that displays is just because it was new language that we don't currently have or greatly revised from what was existing. What's existing is still there. It's just not, um, it's difficult to enforce, given the cost of replacement of sidewalks.
This problem has, goes back many, many years, probably in the late nineteen nineties. Harry was here, Sarah was here, I was here, nobody else here was here. But we sent out thirty-three sidewalk notices. And we had thirty-two property owners in this room for council meeting. And there were two problems. Number one was a cost, which today is probably quadrupled compared to what it was then. The other problem was one that you're gonna have even a tougher time with today is finding concrete contractors that are willing to do the job. And we suggested that neighbors go together to help bring the cost down. We did that whole thing. And basically, it ended up that the borough council threw their arms up and said, we're not dealing with this anymore.
And it, I believe that situation repeated itself again in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen with the sidewalk study.
Well, we had a, we had a plan when we sent those thirty-three out. That was only one-fourth of the town. We were gonna do a quarter of the town over a four-year period. Uh, we, we never got the first quarter done. And they ended up fixing them through lawsuits where people would trip because it's in our right of way. So, they sued the borough and the property owner. And then we'd fix them. Sometimes the highway department had to go out and put in the sidewalk. And then the borough had to file a lien against the property owner to get the money back. Sidewalk issues are very, very, very ugly. And if you don't have the willpower, if you don't plan to enforce the ordinance, once you pass it, there's no sense passing an ordinance.
Yep.
There's one example, Elizabeth Town. Um, they, when they're doing street work, if it's, if it doesn't include sidewalks, if their highway department, they, you know, schedule it out in advance. And when they get ready, when they know they're gonna do a street, they notify the property owners. It's usually six months in advance or more, um, that they need to fix their sidewalks. And if they don't fix it by X date, which is the date that the street gets dug up, then the borough does it for them and leans their property while they're digging up the street. So.
We've done that.
There's some, a little bit of, I mean, they're still getting a lien, but since the borough is doing it while the, while the street's being dug up, while the concrete contractor's there, while everybody's there, there's probably some cost savings. So, that's always an option too. Doesn't fix all the streets. And we have started using CDVG for sidewalks as well, not just curb cuts, but, um, the Washington Street, that portion of Washington Street is to fix the sidewalk there, get it, what? Up to four, four and a half feet as opposed to the two feet that have been done.
Well, that's part of a larger stormwater and other project there too. Like, I mean, we've been replacing, or the gas company's been replacing people's sidewalks, but it's to a larger end.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's not just for the benefit of that property owner or the pedestrian. It's to the larger end of other things that are happening.
Well, and when you use CDVG, you kind of have to do it a large, not just in front of one property, but you have, you, in this case, it probably is, but you kind of have to do it by the block. Because when you fix one person's sidewalk, you may very well create an issue on the next sidewalk over. One person's heave is fixed, but now it doesn't meet the next sidewalk over. Um, so you do, um, you know, when it's, where it's bad, you kind of have to just take it as a full street project.
Well, that's a problem with half the bridges in town too. Because my money says the bridge didn't move, your sidewalk did. And I've had many of these arguments. Uh, a famous one is down by Cockle's Corner. Sidewalk in front of Cockle's Corner, you gotta basically step up to get on the bridge. It's, you know, those two inches, that ship sailed years ago. Of course, if you look at the whole property, there, there's a lot of issues with the corner of their building coming down, sinking and some other things, but. So, this is, uh, this is a biggie.
We gotta get what we can.
Well, and my experience says that when we pass this, your phone will ring off the hook. And it will be neighbors who are really upset about their neighbor's sidewalk that they've either tripped over or they walked over. And then you're gonna figure out how you're gonna have to approach that. And Peter's gonna be really busy.
He is. I mean, in terms of trip hazards, there's nothing different from this draft from what we already have.
Right.
No, it's just gonna bring it to everyone's attention. They're like, hey, by the way, for the last twenty years, your sidewalk's been a hazard.
And it's your responsibility to fix it.
And you managed to not get sued, which is, I guess, good for you. Um, since we have plenty of those that occur. But, but, I mean, you're not wrong. I, I think, um, one of the things I looked at, I, I think it's interesting that the sign issue came up because if we address the sign, if we address the sign issue here, we can skip the next item on the agenda. Like, it's the same, that's the only thing that's really left is what to do about these portable signs. Um, and I'd be inclined to agree with Mr. Moon that, you know, we're talking about obstructions. We'll talk about obstructions here. I would ask if this, if there is a, it seems like this is the appropriate ordinance to also insert, um, but nothing shall go in the tree well language somehow. I don't know that there's really another appropriate spot. This kind of seems like it. And related to, to Ms. Siperly's comments and tree wells, I, I, I understand that we're only talking about scenarios where there's, you know, four feet of area available for a tree well. But I, with a number of sidewalks, and I know, I don't wanna put any shade on the Shade Tree Commission, but the number of sidewalks that are negatively affected by tree roots is so severe that if, I, I can't imagine owning a property and the borough compelling me to put trees in front of it. But, and I know the best of intentions, but then twenty years later, watching that tree destroy my sidewalk, which should have had a lifespan of maybe forty or fifty years, um, or longer, I can't imagine a higher level of frustration. So, I, I think that I also generally oppose the concept of compelling someone to plant trees. Now, I also though qualifyingly look at this. I understand that the dimensions can be a factor. The number of properties where this actually applies may be a lot fewer than I think. I'm thinking about what happened there on Broadway when we widened that. Like, certainly there's a major benefit from adding trees in that area and we, you know, kind of, as mature trees are eliminated or have to be cut, that we refresh that area. But I also saw a lot of success there working with property owners who really wanted trees. And I think some of them actually just went ahead and bought their own trees, you know, rather than the commission funding that.
And they have changed the species that they use and the way that they plant them now. It's unfortunate that when a lot of the trees were planted, that, you know.
I know. If someone told me I had to put, I, I would do whatever I could to stop them doing that. I would find a way. If I had to move like retaining walls or something, I'd make it less than four feet somehow. Figure out some sort of engineering feat to do that.
Did, did I miss it or are tables and chairs covered in here too?
Um, it references only in outdoor dining, um, and that references the outdoor dining ordinance. Um, but we can include standards for public seating.
I mean, it just seems like if we're gonna list obstructions in here, that that should be in that section.
So, the outdoor dining ordinance allows more than three feet of width. Um, it essentially allows everything but five feet for passage. Um, so however, whatever, you know, depending on how, why the sidewalk is in that area and how many obstructions there are, that's, that's the width that you have to work with. I think it could use, I think that ordinance could use some work for sure. Um, but this ordinance. Um, but this ordinance just sort of, um, states that they have to be, outdoor dining areas have to have a permit and be in compliance with that ordinance. We also added a standard for flags, uh, that flags and appurtenances must be, maintain at least a seven-foot clearance above the sidewalk beyond two feet from the building base.
And that would be a change.
That would be a change.
Yeah, I thought that was already a rule, but I guess it's not.
Well, Penda requires seven.
Okay, that's why. Okay, I understand, I mean, I thought that was on someone's. But we're not Penda, so.
Um, I would agree with Mr. Moon and Ms. Serhiser about keeping signs and not removing it from the sidewalk ordinance revision, but actually keeping in it. However, I would, I, I hope that you were joking about skipping the next thing on the agenda, because I think there's a lot more to.
Oh.
To digest in the sign ordinance revisions.
Well, the items when we discussed it last month, that was the only item that was really left outstanding, that we didn't have consensus on, if I checked my notes correctly.
Was it the only one?
The only one, I, I found a lot of the things we had almost uniform consensus on across.
Cause I, I know the next one has, I mean, everything from murals to banners to, we, we went through a lot of that.
Yeah, we had visited those things and, yeah, I, I was, you know, based upon the, the notice I had there. Like with the mural issue, the big thing we had to do was consult with Harb. Wasn't a, a council discussion to further at that point. But we didn't have that conversation.
The last point I wanted to touch on in this draft is the ticketing, um, the fines. On page thirteen. We had talked before about escalating fines. This provides for, um, the borough may issue a ticket or may go directly to citation. It could be done either way. Um, and if a ticket, tickets are issued, um, the first within a twelve-month period is twenty-five dollars, the second is fifty. Third is one hundred and fifty, the fourth is three hundred. Um, and then after that, it would have to go to citation. Um. We don't have to have that many escalations, but. Um. Yeah, um, what are your thoughts on that?
It provides a correction avenue before we go to a magistrate, which seems quite excessive. I know that in, in practice, right, there are, I, I see it every month, the number of warnings that are given. Right, with these types of issues. And generally, i- it's, you know, warning was given this date, recheck this date, the issue had been resolved. And, and, and that's the goal, right, is compliance of any of these ordinances. But should that not function, or not, you know, achieve its end, uh, this gives us a little, more of a gentle slope to addressing it.
So this is gonna work, that the borough's gonna send a notice that you have to replace your sidewalk. And you're a good property owner, so you line up a contractor and he says, no problem, you agree on a price. Your notice says that you have to do it within thirty, sixty, ninety, whatever we're gonna tell them they have to have it done, and he says, I'll see you next spring. Is that gonna generate a fine, or is that, if he has a contract and it shows that, are we gonna?
I mean, we generally work with people who are trying to remedy the situation. I don't know why we wouldn't, you know.
Because that's gonna be the reality.
And it also might not, I mean, some things would go directly to citation. Like, if we came across somebody who just dug up their sidewalk without any permits, we're probably not gonna issue a twenty-five dollar ticket. We'll probably go straight to citation on that. Like, there are some things that are, um, that we probably won't go the ticketing avenue with, but for the most part, we've all, like, the practice has always been that if, that people are responding to our notices and they're working towards compliance, um, that we've, this is why we don't, we have a lot of notices that go out or letters, but without, um, citations. Because we've been, you know, people are responsive and they're working on it, we work with them.
But this includes like your snow and ice and.
Right.
Everything, which has been a horrific problem. Um, at least the past several years, and probably as long as we can remember, and it seems like it's always the same properties, over and over and over again.
Mostly out-of-town landlords, rental properties.
Yeah, or places that are, yeah, currently for sale.
Yeah.
That tends to be in my neighborhood.
Commercial businesses that may want to put the sidewalk in their contract.
So how long does the borough have to issue a permit?
A permit for what?
Sidewalks, driveways.
Um, how long does it usually take for the HOP?
Depends on when I get everything administrated and complete. Somebody could send it in the first of the month and they may not have all my m- the material to me for the administrative complete. And it could take two weeks. But if it's administrative and complete, it should take a day and a half.
That's, as the, is the case with most permits, once we have the bulk of the time spent in getting all the documents.
Thoughts about the sidewalk ordinance?
Just that I think you shouldn't pull signs out, keep signs in.
Yeah, this, are, are people generally okay with adding the, the tree well? Just stopping the practice of putting things into the tree wells?
Yes.
And this is seems kind of like the place where this could go. Like, that's the question, right? Like, where do you put that language? And it seems to me like this is the ordinance that. The tree wells are in the sidewalk, to sidewalk ordinance, I don't know, move on.
I mean, eh, I, I, yes, and I, and I don't think it's just the tree wells. I think it's the tree itself. I don't think things should be taped on the tree itself. And then furthermore, the lamp posts, et cetera, that are on our sidewalks, while it's public property, that is not publicly owned as far as the lamp post itself and the meter itself.
But doesn't mean, yeah, it's not available for like public use.
Right, I've seen things taped to those things, like yard sale and, you know, like, that's not the place for it.
And, and we fall, we fall through the crack there, because if you do it to a mete pole or another utility pole, there's a law on the books through the state.
Yeah.
And you can be fined.
Some.
But our poles seem to fall through the crack there because we're not a utility.
Okay, sounds like we should figure out a way to add that.
Sentence more permanently fixed.
It's, we do.
Can't staple stuff or nail stuff to the utility poles.
Mm-hmm.
We have that language and it's not in the sidewalk ordinance, and we also have it for trees.
Right. Good to know.
Um, so Harry and I do still have quite a bit of work to do on this, um, so you'll be seeing it again, but we are gonna, I'm gonna send it over to C.S. Davidson. Um, to do their review as well, um, so we can get on.
Okay. All right. Any other issues on the sidewalk ordinance at this town? All right, the next, uh, item on the agenda is the sign ordinance. Uh, we discussed this at length in August. Um, the one matter that had been outstanding in that way was should the placement of portable signs be further regulated? And essentially, we just dealt with that matter. Um. The one thing that did match up with that, that we may or may not need to, uh, go further on, I'm trying to think of what was in the sidewalk ordinance draft, we just saw, was the right-of-way distance.
Was it the, um, I had suggested go even larger?
Yeah, if that, if that is, did we require that to go to sixty inches in the sidewalk ordinance in any way, or? Trying to think of how that was just.
For, so for obstructions, we require five feet. Um, ADA is four feet with a turnaround every two hundred feet.
So, but we require sixty inches?
Yeah.
So that was Mr. Moon's suggestion last month on this. Um. I guess the question there is, is sixty inches, five feet adequate, appropriate? You know, your thoughts on that?
It's a hoop skirt.
That's a, a hoop skirt is five feet.
Sorry, you didn't measure it.
That's how we measure it in Gettysburg.
We measure in hoop skirts.
One hoop skirt. That's actually true. We probably would do anything to avoid using the metric system. Um. Uh, many of the other items that we, we had considered, we had reached, uh, consensus on, Mr. Carr mentioned the murals, um, the concept of painting things directly on the substrate. Um, we had a, a favorable response from all those that were present, uh, and we need to discuss that with Harb. Um. We had consensus on continuing to limit the on-premises, uh, banners to thirty calendar days three times. Um. We had consensus that the banners that hung as a set would be one permit.
I'm sorry, Ms. Serhiser.
Yes.
Can we go, uh, back just for a moment to the portable sign placement?
Yep, yep, yep.
There was a question raised about sidewalk ordinance causes displays to be within three feet of the building facade. Should we do the same for portable signs? But if we, does that need to be addressed in this ordinance, or?
So this was referencing the existing sidewalk ordinance.
The existing sidewalk ordinance, so.
Yeah.
Does this, so the existing sidewalk ordinance currently says this, the portable signs.
It doesn't address.
Doesn't address, it talks about displays, and basically what we just had is, we're just gonna add it there.
Okay.
So that we don't have to.
Got it.
Have it kind of, and I think that for me, that's as much as anything, it's about, um, letting the, whoever's checking this, property owner, resident, whatever. Check in relatively one location, right, and they're gonna find out that, okay, I'm putting things on the sidewalk, what does that mean? And it, it's kind of a toss-up, but you don't want it two places, right, that you have a conflict then at some point later.
And we don't, with, for example, the sandwich board signs, which I'm not a fan of, um, do, when they apply, when we apply, we, we, and we get the permit. The, it, it is, it is not a, um, s- uh, um, is it's, it's obviously, it's specific to that property and that business. But you don't give us a map of, it needs to go here.
No, so last year, we started requiring people to send a picture of where they were going to put the sign and demonstrate that the sign was gonna leave five feet clearance.
Allow for. Yeah.
Um, I do think that we probably should still have this in the sign ordinance, because people aren't gonna look, when they're applying for their permit for their portable sign, they're not gonna look in the sidewalk ordinance to find out where they can put it. Um, so it probably would be worth repeating, or just keeping it in the sign ordinance. Um, but.
Is there a way to reference?
Or reference.
Like, a reference would be more proper, I would think.
The reason why I bring this up is, uh, uh, at least one business told me they were told exactly where to put it, or suggested where it should go. And the reason why I bring this up, uh, is because I don't think that's a bad idea, because of how our sidewalks are at the various, you know. If you're at the corner, for example, of Chambersburg and Washington, um, your sidewalk might, your sidewalk, sandwich board sign might need to be in a specific spot to allow ADA complacency, eh, et cetera, et cetera. Whereas another portion of the town, which may have a wider sidewalk, you might have a little bit more leeway, if you will. But there are some properties, I think, that, you know, need to be suggested of, it really needs to go here to stay compliant.
Well, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that's when, if you have someone who's like, I don't know how to do this.
Uh-huh.
I mean, can it lead to tape measure?
So that's, that's, that can be part of the application process and the permitting of, here is a, here is a map of your lot and the map of the area of the sidewalk in front of it. And here is the suggestion of where it needs to go to stay compliant with this ordinance and ADA. Are you following me there?
Oh, absolutely. I, I think that's key.
Cause each property is so different.
We've talked previously about how, you know, a different employee might put it in the wrong place, and all of a sudden you're out of compliance. And, and I can specifically say that at a restaurant that I walk by daily, w- where usually the sandwich board is in a place where it is not obstructing the sidewalk. And, uh, I went there the other day with, with, um, Ms. Lawson, and they, employee had placed it in such a way that the sidewalk was completely impassable. Right next to a utility pole, between stairs and utility pole, there was not even twelve inches of clearance. So, we should be specifying where it could go.
So like I said, we, we were asking them to tell us where they were going to put it, and then if, if what they submitted didn't demonstrate that there was ADA compliance, then we had that discussion of, well, it's not gonna work in that location. But what about over here? I don't wanna have it be, we determine where it goes, because, hey, that's time-consuming, but also is that a liability for us? If where we tell them to put it, there ends up being an issue.
Well, we, we do it for the outdoor seating, right? We go to the location and we shoot a pin into the sidewalk, right?
They apply for that location.
Right.
And we review that location to make sure that it's compliant and if it's not.
We're, we're talking about a finite number of sandwich board signs, right? It, we could probably bang them all out in a day if we went on a visit to each one and said, you, you can go there.
It took all year last year, all summer for PMCA to enforce against sandwich board signs, just to get permits.
But your point on the dining areas was that they ask for an area and we decide if it complies.
They asked for an area, yeah. Yes.
By taking out.
I mean, like everything else.
A magical tape measure, really, right? Like, it's, it's not actually that complex. The problem, I think, what we're seeing is that internally, people are having difficulty regulating what their own people do.
Right.
Their own employees do. Um, so, I mean, i- i- if it's helpful for us to cause them to draw it, I, I mean, i- it sounds more like a, a problem they're having with their own employees. Like, that they need to have a diagram internally, you know, perhaps we could suggest that, but it, it, it seems to me like we would be dictating to people.
Well, I think.
Really significantly, and then.
I think if, if Ms. Mar- if.
The effort of doing it all seems like kind of wasted effort almost.
Like Ms. Marshall said, though, I think, I think maybe we're do- maybe we're already doing it, what I was thinking. Uh, if Ms. Mar- if what Ms. Marshall just said about, they draw out, this is where I want it to go, and if, and you look at it, and if there's an issue, then you say it's not gonna work there, but how about something like this?
Either drew it or took a picture of it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I guess, all right.
I guys think that owners should be on the property owner or.
Sure.
Business to say, hey, this is where I'm gonna put it, and then we say, like, well, can't you measure?
And they might have a creative solution, you know, if what they originally produced isn't compliant, they might have a more creative solution that we might not have thought of, so.
Can I just point it from like an enforceability standard? I don't think that Mr. Eastman would let this get over on the paper. But if you say you should do this, y- y- you, you don't have anything that's enforceable there, so. And like I said, I don't think Harry would let that transfer over into paper as you should put the sign here, because then you're not gonna have an enforceable section.
Yeah, this is one to me, like, where the concrete issue is rather complex. I understand people are doing it. And there's the issue of stopping them from doing, from not complying and not putting it where they said they were gonna put it. But, I mean, I don't know, the tape measure doesn't seem that complex, it's just that people don't seem to make the effort. And unfortunately, it seems like the only way to make people make the effort is gonna be to warn them and then ticket them. That's pretty much.
I just, I just think that the cause of the ordinance itself is so broad, because it's the entire borough, but the properties that have sandwich board signs are so different from each other as far as the width of the sidewalk, et cetera, that if it's taken care of during the permitting process, then I think, you know, that's, that's great. Then I think we're on the same page here. Uh, but I would say that maybe that's something that Peter has on his agenda of checking out some of those that may be, oh, that's not really where that's supposed to be. And I know sometimes that takes like a residential complaint or a citizen complaint to let them know, hey, you might wanna check out this property. Um, so we can pass the sidewalk correctly, you know, easily. Okay, thank you.
So it sounds like more or less this is a practice.
I think the limiting signs to the first three fil- feet of the building.
Will solve a lot of it.
Will cut a lot of it.
Yeah.
And.
It would just simplify it for everybody. Um, obviously for us, we can see from down the street without getting up to it if it's where it belongs.
Well, be specific in that language, right? Is the building the facade, or is it the stairway attached to the facade?
The facade.
Right, so we have to be very specific here.
Uh-huh. Yeah, I mean, cause this does also impact the, what we're kind of looking at in the sidewalk ordinance. There was an issue there or an item there about, you know, being able to get out of your car essentially and people are parking and it addresses that. Because you can't have the sign within three feet and then be blocking a car door, it's not.
Right.
Not gonna happen. I guess unless you park on the sidewalk and then, that's fair. It's not where your head is, all right. Okay, so are we in a good place with portable signs then? We're gonna look at referencing there, okay? I had mentioned some of the other items we've reached consensus on. Is there anything that someone believes we need to revisit? I guess is my question, there were some absent, but many of us were here.
I think just the one thing that, that we still need to chat with Harb about. I do recall something in here about saying, I think we need to hear public comment, but we haven't.
I think most of that, most of that, that with the, um, the portable sign.
That's what it was.
Placement.
That's what it was.
Um, and I would expect that when it's written that we're proposing putting things within three feet of the building, we will receive public comment. I, I would be surprised if we didn't, although it's certainly possible that we wouldn't until enforcement action takes place. But hopefully, people will notice that which is probably going to be written. All right, are there any other items on the, uh, the side ordinance people would like to revisit? Okay, uh, if not, the, uh, the final item on the agenda this evening is our first discussion pertaining to the personnel complaint policy. So this was drafted by our labor attorney at our request. Mr. Moon and I had requested they take a look at this. At current boroughwide, we do not have a policy that addresses how the elected officials are notified regarding personnel complaints, whether that's required. And, um, you know, also how the employees are really notified or how any of that's handled. So, uh, the intention of this policy is to provide clear communication and understanding about the status of our employees and any complaints that are filed to ensure that appropriate oversight is provided for, including the potential for liability and ensure that our policies and practices support the rights of the people that are served by the employees of the borough. So, given the length of the policy, it's actually fairly brief. I would read some selections from it. We do end up with essentially two different scenarios that we have to acknowledge because of the way that burrows are structured. This policy would apply across the board, so this includes scenarios where the borough manager but would be required to notify council about complaints that are filed related to employees that fall underneath his purview. Uh, and then also with the, uh, the mayor and the police chief that would share information of employees that fall within the police department. So the policy states, it is the policy of the borough council to require periodic reporting of complaints, investigations and outcomes, accountability measures. The borough manager, mayor and chief of police involving external complaints filed by persons, including anonymous complaints regarding the operation of the borough government and/or actions of borough employees. The borough manager, mayor and/or chief of police shall provide borough council with timely and unfettered access to necessary information within the limits imposed by this policy and the law. Provide timely, written and detailed responses to inquiries from borough council regarding the status of investigations and accountability procedures. The items that would be required to be made available would, I'm gonna skip down there to that segment. Would involve.
Are you skipping?
Yeah, I'm looking for the listing here where I had it. So in the, the paragraph under monitoring in the center of the second page, the request here, or the, the statement of the policy would be that this would require a summary that would include the name of the reporting party, the name of the employee, the date and time of the incident or complaint, the nature of the complaint and the disposition. So one of the important things to understand about the way this policy is written is intentionally done this. It is designed to protect the employee as well, but provide also with a summary amount of information to the borough council so that it can reasonably assess the liabilities to the borough, the services being provided to the public and the resolution, which is kind of the most important part of this, that, that complaints are followed up on and reach a resolution. So I don't think this will be our last discussion of this policy, but I'd like to, to open up the, uh, before the council and the mayor to, uh, discuss what has been drafted. This is our first discussion of that.
I'll, I'll start, it's just gonna make some general statements because it does involve the police. I don't think it's news to anybody that, I do have the confidence of, have confidence in the police chief. Under his leadership, I think, since I've been on council, the force has been very competent and professional and I've, I've seen improvements, so I just wanna publicly state that. There's also speculation that there is those on council that wish to take oversight from the mayor. That's at least been put out there in the public. I'm dead set against that, as I know that the mayor is. That's why you ran, uh, and I, I respect your role and your oversight. Uh, so any specifics that we, we talk about, just, I just want everybody to know that as we move forward. And I'm also not interested in micromanaging the police. I do trust Chief Glenny's thirty-five years of experience and would be interested in, in his feedback as we move forward as the mayor as well.
Yeah, I would note that this, um, this policy is, is primarily aimed at ensuring that appropriate information is communicated, uh, not altering in any way the, um, management structure of a borough or the oversight structure. It's about making sure that the information is communicated because candidly, the day will come when Charles Gable is not the manager of Gettysburg Borough, the day will come when Rob Lenny is not the chief of the police, Rita Forrelling is not the mayor, I'm not the council president. And candidly, with what I have experienced during my time here over the last seven years, I would almost feel like I was doing a disservice to the people that will come in our place if I did not ensure that they had a reasonable assurance that this information was being shared with them because we have had unfortunate experiences in the past where there was no knowledge of things that had occurred over a series of years. And then essentially, the elected officials found out about those things after we had experienced a very severe event. And it's not been just one occurrence, there have been multiple. So this is really about information and ensuring that, um, and some of it's, uh, you know, that when we communicate with a member of the public who says, hey, I filed a complaint, that you can look at them and you can say, yes, okay, I understand, you can follow up on it and you can understand that it's being dealt with and that it has reached a conclusion or that it's still under investigation. Um, I know a lot of the public discourse seems to be about the police department. We have complaints filed against borough employees in all different areas of the operation and had, and have had during my time.
What?
Yes.
What I'd like to say in reading is, you know, right, because all of us have been here forever. My question is, if you can't answer your labor council, when it says, the policy shall require a mayor. A mayor, can a policy require a mayor to do anything?
We can ask, I would, I would think that.
I'd request, I think request would be, I don't know.
I think that many of our policies probably require any number of us to take certain steps.
Can I add something there?
Okay.
That's a great question and we'll have to dig into that, but very, I wanna be really clear, the, the purpose of this is to make that requirement. It's to create transparency.
I understand.
In the, in the terms of how we're handling complaints about any of our employees, whether that is at management level or below. We need that transparency.
I understand.
We, as the budgetary side of the job here, uh, you know, we need to know why we're being sued all the time.
I understand.
Right, and further, this policy not only protects the taxpayers, it also protects the employees as well. We need to make sure that when this is instituted, that it also requires that investigations of complaints involve a statement by the person the complaint was made about and that they are notified of the complaint as well. And that has been specifically requested by our employees.
I understand that.
Okay.
My question was, can a policy require a mayor to take action? That's just, I understand this policy, I understand what it's needed for, I completely support it, but my question is, can a policy require a mayor to act? I don't know.
Mr. Eastman, do you have an opinion on that? Is that something you would need to dig into?
I'd, I'd like to take a look at that, obviously.
The answer could be yes, I don't know. And it's just fair because there're gonna be other mayors coming after me and this could be the beginning of something that, you understand where I'm going with this?
I, I would suggest, and without being a lawyer, that a policy enacted by the council could compel and probably should compel an employee of the municipality to provide such information.
Right.
Right. That would be the question.
Yeah, no, that's something we'll investigate or we'll have council investigate.
Right, right, well, that's, that's what I'm saying that.
It's something we'll have either.
The mayor is not an employee of the borough.
Somewhere between Mr. Eastman and labor council, the boroughs.
However, the chief of police and the borough manager are direct employees of the council.
Because I know certainly there are things that are already require provision to law that, you know, regulate our activities. And even as elected officials, we're not free to simply do as we choose. There are things that we comply with currently that are matters of law, matters of policy. You know, for instance, even like accessing control of the building, right? If there's a, a policy about that, I can't, you know, hand my key fob to whomever, right?
I would, I don't know, I would, I would argue that we are all, elected officials are all employees, including the mayor. We all sign the employee handbook, we all get paid by the borough of Gettysburg. That's my opinion.
Well, okay.
Even though we're elected officials, we are still employees.
It, it's an excellent question.
It is, that is something that needs to add on a good point. Our elected officials, employees.
I mean, my.
I don't know.
We are all held accountable to the same employee handbook and we get paid by the borough of Gettysburg in a check.
Well, I think it's.
I would say that I, I think something very clearly is that the mayor is compelled by the duties set forth in the, in the borough code, so. My gut reaction is, is that if a policy departs from those duties and so forth and it would be possibly advisory suggested, but might not be enforceable if you, if you would. In other words, the, the mayor's duties are very, very, very narrowly specified within the borough code, just like council's duties are specified within the borough code.
Okay. Other thoughts about this policy?
Wes, I can give you a few concerns if you'd like to hear those. This type of policy is a very good idea. And I, I'm not opposed to a policy such as this, but I think there's some things in this that are problematic. I think it's vague, too vague. What is a complaint? Is a complaint, your officer shouldn't have arrested me. You know, I get those every day, well, not every day, but yeah, weekly, I get those. That, that's a matter for the courts. You know, it, it's something that general. So what is a complaint? And, and even within our police department policy, there are several different kinds of complaints. You have informal complaints, you have formal complaints, um, you know, you know, a lot of times it's, you know, it's the, the supervisor having a discussion, let's say, with, with the employee of, you know, somebody comes in and says, hey, you, the officer was very mean to me and then the supervisor will have a discussion with that person. Well, was the officer being mean or was the officer being stern? I used to jokingly say when I was in Center County, she recorded this because there's, there's a difference. And if the officer was just telling this person the way it needs to be and the way the law works and things like that and people interpret that as, as being mean, well, that, that, that's in fact the officer doing his job and being stern. So I, I, I'm just trying to point out, what is a complaint? Where does that fall? I think that some of, some of the language back here in the one thing that you talked about, with the, the summaries, that will include the name of the reporting party. That could be very, very, very problematic. There's, there's a number of things that upon that one. Maybe the reporting party doesn't want their name disclosed. They, they, they were very reluctant to report it, they wanted to remain anonymous, but they gave their name because they want, they thought it was important, but they don't want that disclosed. What if that complaining person is a juvenile? There's, that's problematic to release that information. If it, the, the reporting party is a victim of a crime, it may be problematic to release that information. Especially if that, that crime that's being investigated and the complaint about the officer comes out of some type of domestic violence assault or sexual assault. So the, the, the name of the reporting party is a very problematic portion. The name of the officer could become problematic because, you know, if it, if it's unfounded or the complaint is not completely investigated or it, it ends up being unsubstantiated. What, there's some problems there and I, and I think that there, those are issues that I think if aren't hammered out, will drive reaction from the union and, and I don't think that's necessary. So I, I think they can be hammered out. But just, just a couple of my things on, on, uh, just, just a quick read over. And, uh, just my thoughts there. So, but, you know, as, as, uh, you know, as we've discussed before, you know, creature procedure and if it's a lawfully arrived at procedure, then, you know, my goodness, we're gonna follow it. But, but, you know.
So at current, so when you're talking about like the, what constitutes a complaint, for instance? One of the issues we had that came out of one of the various reports, maybe McNeely, dealt with receiving verbal complaints. Currently, if someone comes in to complain, does an officer take that information?
He must, yes.
Okay.
Yes, that, that's part of our policy.
And is that then a complaint?
What's that?
And is that then a complaint?
Depending on what that complaint is, yes. I mean, if, 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 if it's a legitimate complaint against police and not like, and I just use the, you shouldn't have arrested me or, I'll, I'll tell you what we get every week and I know Rita gets them all the time. They show, I shouldn't have got this parking ticket, constantly. Is that a complaint?
Well, that's my question, you say what's reasonable, like who decides that?
Yeah, well, I, and, and I think that that's what, I, I don't know the answer to that right now. I think that's something that needs hammered out and what we're gonna do, you know, is the anonymous complaint things, you know, somebody could be making that up and, you know, if the, and the investigation is not complete yet to where we figured out that, well, some of this is, is not the truth. Um, and we're turning that over, we're kinda getting the cart before the horse there and, and saying the employee did something or didn't do something before we actually know they did. But I, you know, I understand what you're saying from the McNeely report, but I, you know, there's, and there's other things like, we had, you know, we had a complaint, or we have complaints where when one of the sergeants goes to investigate it and, and get back with those people, they'll make arrangements to meet. and, and get back with those people, they'll make arrangements to meet the person, doesn't show up, the sergeant will keep calling them, calling them, calling them, to a point where, you know, they just don't get back to them anymore, and, and we've got no further information to investigate from. So at that point, the, the investigation's kind of closed, and the, the complaint would either be unfounded or unsustained.
Right, so you see how that would kind of fit into the summary, right? We-
I do, but I, I think that the, the-
The mayor full attempt.
I think what I'm looking at is, I think the problematic part there is, hey, we had a complaint of X. This is what we did. At this point, now, if, you know, if something gets further down the road that we need to involve names in that, that's one thing. But, but, but I, and again, you involved, you know, you, you send a policy down that you want all these names in there? We'll follow it to the extent we can under the law. But I think that it's less problematic if we pull names out, if we just get summaries of, "This is what the complaint was, investigation was completed, this was the outcome of that," or generally, without names and things like that, because I think that what you get when you put names in there is that's when you start bringing these other folks in, that, and that's where we start splitting hairs of, "Who can I tell you is the complaint?" And, and, you know, "When, when can we disclose the complaint's name?" And things like that. But I do think, I think that a definition section in this policy, like there are in many, it would be appropriate, and, and there you could define what that complaint was. There's some other things in there that you could put in that definition section, which is not uncommon in, in policy. But I think just the way it's written, it's a little vague.
I guess I struggle with the concept that the elected officials would not be able to know the names of employees that were involved.
And again, if that's something you put in the policy, and you want to know what employees involved, my- And I think where that, where that's going to pose a problem, from the employee's representative's standpoint, is that there's a negativity attached, where they're going to say that there's a negativity attached to somebody filing a complaint against them. And even if that complaint was unfounded, now it's, there's a mindset that's being developed that this officer was complained against. So even if that particular complaint was unfounded, two years from now, if something like that happens again, then it says, "Well, that must be true, because they complained about him before." I, I, I just think that, that, that's where, where we're going to have an issue. If, but if, if you're insistent on who the employee is, and, you know, everybody knows that there's, there's definitely a, a confidentiality, once that information's released to them, that, that information cannot be, be released. Just my suggestions.
One of the examples you raised, I, I don't know how many times I've gotten an email that, "I shouldn't have gotten this parking ticket," yada, yada, yada. And then, I cannot remember any occasion that I was like, "You're right. You should not have." Right? Because usually they describe enough information for me to say that, like, yes, our employee operated as they should have. You know, I know you may disagree that we shouldn't meet her at this time, but we do, and it's on the sign, and that's it. I, personally, I would much rather be able to look at the public and say, "Hey, I know what's been filed, our people are doing exactly what they're supposed to do, and I think this is what gives me that kind of closure." What, what I feel uncomfortable about is when someone would say, "Hey, I filed a complaint, and I have no idea if it's even been filed," because we've had this discussion, the mayor, you and I, you know, some others here, had that discussion of, so many times, people say, "Why, oh, what, you know, this happened," and my first question would be, "Well, have you filed a complaint?" And it'd be nice to know that, yes, they had, or no, they're full of it. You know?
I agree. Do you know what else I do every time I think about this? Transparency, I agree with this, with that, but this also could help with morale? Because then you know all of the complaints have been looked at, and it's not some employees and none of others. Do you understand where I'm going with that? And it gives the employees that security, that security, they, they can't say, "Well, she got away with that," or "He got away with that, but nothing happened."
Well, I think of the number of times that I know, like specifically with the mayor and the chief, you know, we're talking about the police department, and this particular, you know, that's where a lot of your concerns lie. I think of the number of times that I've seen things on social media, videos specifically, where I then thought, like, wow, that's what our people are dealing with. You know, this is the type of approach, this is the type of, you know, attitude, presentation from a member of the public, that our employees and the public-facing role they're in are compelled to deal with, and, and sometimes just bear, because that's how it goes sometimes. I, I think of some of the, you know, videos I've seen of people that are really just not completely in control of their mental faculties, and things that they kind of put our employees through. And I, I don't know, sometimes it's just by chance that you see them, and I kind of appreciate knowing that, like, hey, our, our people are able to do what they need to do, even when the situations are really unfavorable, because they certainly deal with, sometimes with situations that are just very, very negative and unreasonable. People that, you know, do things that are difficult to comprehend. And I kind of like to know when that's happened. It gives me a stronger faith in, in our people on the street. But usually this happens by circumstance.
I think that if, if we, as, as a government entity, at, at the end of 2022 here, do not already have standard operating procedures and a complaint file, or is, or, or form, if you will, for, for the entire borough, not just one department, but all, then we are really behind. We are really behind. Standard operating procedures, and from an HR perspective, is business 101, and HR 101, and we need to have them. This is a, a step, I think, in that direction. I think a policy definitely needs to be created, and I would trust our, our labor attorneys. I will note that in this draft of complaint policy, the final paragraph does indeed state, "This policy, policy shall not impair the authority and responsibility of the police chief, the mayor, or the borough manager as provided in the Borough Code." So I think that, that's a moot point, the issue from before, because it literally says, "It will not impair your responsibility."
Still a good question to ask.
It's a good question to ask, but it's, but it's also contradicting itself here in that last paragraph.
Yeah, I'd rather not rely on that unless-
I still have a question. It needs clarification.
I agree.
I under, I read the last paragraph, I understand that, but I think it's something that needs to be clarified.
Yeah, I don't want any of our successors to be leaning on that last paragraph.
Thank you.
I'd like them to know, like, here's the deal.
But I think we, we have to have, from an HR's perspective, we have to have a policy, there has to be a formal written policy and a formal written complaint form.
I agree.
Whether it's anonymous, you know, or what. But you've got to have steps. We've got to have standard operating procedures. If we don't, we're really behind.
Well, I think we've talked about this before. Aren't we required to also take verbal complaints if they don't want to fill out a form?
We are by the police department's policy, yes.
Yeah, so we have to have flexibility there, too.
Verbal, anonymous, any employee in the police department, yeah.
And you, but you have that.
I do have that.
You have standard operating procedures with the police department. My point is, we have to have something officially written of, this is how you deal with this situation.
Yeah.
You make a verbal complaint, or you make a written complaint, and it goes down the chain of command, or up.
No, and I think that's, that's fair, like, it's, you know, expecting employees to know what to do in that scenario without a directive, a written policy directive, is unfair to them. You know? Right? So, you know, it's a small borough, right? Why does the police department get some attention here? Candidly, because it's the largest department in the borough. All right? That's the reality, it's 24/7 operation. So, you know, that's part of the component, part of this. But to expect, you know, an employee to take down a verbal complaint against another employee in an operation with this few employees, really, you know, it, it's nice that they could have, like, "Hey, this is what you are to do," and then not to have to, yeah, try to make a decision. Do I take a, a complaint about a person down the hall, or do I just kind of brush this aside?
Well, you also look at, you, you would look at our, you would look at the borough's overall budget number, and you would look at a for-profit business or corporation with a similar budget number. They most likely have an HR department, not just one person. There's, you know, we, we just, we have, we, we have to do better, and you've got to have things written out.
Other input at this point? It sounds like we do have at least one item of significance to consult with attorneys about. And then I would agree that the definitions here would be critical to making sure that this is clear.
I just, in, just, just for point of clarification, in, in the police department's personnel complaints policy, it calls them complaint classifications, and there's basically three of them. There's an informal complaint, which is, "A matter in which a shift supervisor is satisfied that appropriate action has been taken by a supervisor of rank greater than the accused member." Then there's the formal complaint, "A matter in which a supervisor determines that further action is warranted, such complaints may be investigated by a supervisor or rank greater than the accused member, or referred to a professional standards unit depending on the seriousness and complexity of the investigation." And a professional standards unit, in our case, amounts to the other squad's supervisor, so you're not getting investigated by your squad. And then there is the one, what I was talking about, which is incomplete, which is, "A matter in which the complaining party either refuses to cooperate or becomes unavailable after diligent follow-up investigation at the discretion of the assigned supervisor or the professional standards unit. Such matters may be further investigated depending on the seriousness of the complaint and the availability of sufficient information." So, I mean, there's three identified, you know, there's more, there's sources of complaints. And we do, our, just for everybody, and since this is televised, the complaints against police form is online. There's also a compliments form I'll put out right there now, it's, it's right under complaints. So if you want to do the compliment, you know, please do. But it's there, so, and, and, you know, I, I agree with Chad 100%. I mean, we have those policies in place in the police department.
Sounds like we should be using the same language to make, making sure that they apply across. Because we do have, we have some other employees, I would say, that just by the nature of their jobs, I think that's some of it. When you're going to be completing an enforcement action, or giving a parking ticket, you're going to be more likely to experience this, you know, than other employees that might, you know, be paving a road.
Oh, I don't know, if you're flagging traffic.
Maybe not, no. That's fair.
I cannot argue Mr. Lawver about that. If you're directing traffic, you-
That is fair, right? But I guess, yeah, you know, it's, it's a, it's a borough-wide thing. We need to make sure the public is getting the attention they deserve if they believe they have an issue.
And I also think it needs to, they need to, the documents need to point to themselves, meaning, "This is a policy that needs to be referenced in the employee handbook, refer to X, and refer to standard operating procedures," so that it's not just one doc, I mean, they've got to point to the, to each other.
See, I can back that up, too, because in preparation for tonight, I think there's four policies here that, that I pulled, because they're all referenced within these policies. So.
Yeah, so I see, you know, kind of two, two things we're dealing with here. One, we need to be using some of the information we already have across the board. And then the other issue is communication, ensuring that that takes place. Other input related to personnel complaints policy this evening? This is something we'll be revisiting, certainly. All right. If there is not, we have a second session of public comment, the same criteria apply. Name, address, five minutes, public comments. All right, if not, oh, I'm sorry. Public comment.
Yes. I speak as a resident of 524 McMillan Street. And my question is, after 40 years of living in an intersection, I found out three weeks ago that I live on a curve that involves public right-of-way. And so I have tried to find out what my new responsibilities will be for that public right-of-way, and nobody will return my phone calls and give me that definition. So I need to know what I'm responsible for, for snow removal, because there's going to be a driveway go across the sidewalk in front of my house, because that's public right-of-way, and that permit has been issued. So now if they build a pillar at the corner of their driveway, I'll have a pillar in the front of my house for a driveway that goes to a neighboring property. So I'm trying to find out what I'm responsible for, and I called today to find out how I get a driveway permit on that side of my house, and what part of the, and what part of the right-of-way I'm allowed to use. And I can't seem to get answers to those questions, and I'm getting frustrated by it. Part of my questions tonight with the sidewalk coordinator is, what is the procedure to get a driveway permit? Because Robbie came out to me today, and he said, "I can tell you what specifications are and everything else, but can't really tell you the procedure." And now that I don't have an intersection anymore, I have a curve, and I was told by the borough engineer that the curve is going to be divided in wedges based on the square. Well, in the square, we have a flagpole in the middle, and when we talk about those properties, you could take a string from the flagpole to the curb, and the flagpole to the property line, I understand that. But in order to do that on my curve in front of my house, we have to know where that point is, and nobody can tell me where that point is. So I would like some answers as to how that works, since we apparently have given a driveway to cross what is borough right-of-way in front of my house for a private driveway. Yeah, I'd like some answers from somebody. I think it's a very reasonable question to have. I've maintained the grass in the sidewalk in front of my house based on it being an intersection for over 30 years. Now all of a sudden, it's a curve, and I'm only going to be responsible for a wedge, but nobody can tell me where that wedge is. I don't think I'm being unreasonable at all. I think it's a very sensible question that any property owner would have when this is done to them. And I expect some answers, which I can't get. I've called and left messages on phones, nobody will call me back. So I'm here face-to-face. And the room is very quiet.
John, John called me today, and I went out, and we discussed the HOP for the driveway entrance, but he, if he's going to put a driveway, and he has to go through a land use permit, which requires an HOP for a street cut.
Can we ensure that Mr. Lawver's questions can answer, please?
I don't know anything about the driveway that is permitted out there now, because I have not seen the HOP for, for that.
Yeah, I'm really referring here to Charles, because this will all fall underneath his purview. Okay. All right. Further public comment?
Could it be that the previous owner of the neighboring property did not have it surveyed correctly?
Well, there's a discrepancy there, too, because where the current survey put my property corner, there's been a pin there for a long time, but according to the county tax maps, which I'll be the first to say, in my 30 years here, are not always accurate, there's a six-foot discrepancy. And I understand that I have to refer to my deed to get that straightened out, and it will probably cost me to have it re-surveyed, or talk to Bob Share, who surveyed for the buyer. But, yeah, I get that.
And perhaps some of that cost should fall to the previous owner of the original survey of that.
Well, I don't know. I'd just like to know what part of the right-of-way I can use, and what part of the right-of-way I'm going to be responsible for.
Okay.
And I think that's a borough's responsibility to tell me that.
Okay. So we'll ensure that Mr. Lawver gets some answers. Any additional public comment?
Some, sort of similar. I had a constituent reach out and ask. So- So between the Racehorses Alley parking garage and the railroad is a piece of sidewalk that apparently is not owned by the borough. It's owned by the railroad company, if you will, what it's, what is it called?
And good luck, CSX.
Okay, so the question is, who removes the snow from that area? Because whoever it is is stopping at a certain area. And then there's our residents with yard and sidewalk between the railroad track and their house, property line, and Stratton Street that never gets snow removal. But they're told it's not their property. Who's supposed to be removing that snow?
Almost certainly CSX.
Correct.
Unfortunately.
They're stopping where that part of the.
It's unfortunately kind of no different than at the fire department. We have people join, and they're gonna be there and stay over the snow events. And I said, "Here's the deal, if they ask," I said, "You might as well just go the whole way over the railroad track." Physically over it. Because CSX is never going to come and clean it. And we can ticket and find CSX all day, they'll be happy to pay our fines. Or ignore them. And we're just gonna get jammed up. And that's unfortunate with our residents in that. And I know the property you're talking about, there's only one. And I know the other in that jam up.
Yeah, it affects two properties, even though the house.
Oh, the rear of one, yeah.
One faces the sidewalk and one door faces Stratton. But it technically affects two properties.
So there's one that's their old.
But one is a very elderly, and there's no way she can shovel snow by herself.
Are we still running behind a parking garage?
We are.
Well, I can, I can shed a little bit of light. The problem is CSX. When we put up the parking garage, because on the bottom floor, there's an exit out of it, we, we being the borough, took care of the snow from Carlisle Street down to the end of the parking garage.
Yeah, that's where it stopped.
And that's where it stopped. And that's been that way since we built the parking garage, which was 19, I don't know. I'd have to check the plaque out here on the wall.
Can we go the other 20 feet?
I'm not so sure we didn't. I'll put it this way, I know there are times when we did the other 20 feet. Because we moved, we used to move that with a tractor, and we went on the sidewalk at Carlisle Street and off of Stratton Street.
It's the practicality of it dictated that.
It just made no sense to stop and back up.
Why would you stop and back up? Right, yeah.
And but now, since the train station isn't longer ours, we don't do the whole way out to Carlisle Street. We do from the generator stair, the transformer station down to our deck.
Okay, yeah, because that one time the borough.
And we have to access either from Carlisle or Stratton. So we could come in either direction just to get to our sidewalk.
So perhaps we should try to access it from Stratton. Make that a practice if we can.
It was never an intentional thing to those people. Just like at summer time, the weeds. You can send CSX all the weed notices you want. And you'd be, you'd be further ahead and sit here and bang your head on the table.
Which I do not suggest.
I think you'd be further ahead if it was in the weeds.
Yeah, which we don't.
All right, any additional public comment? All right, if not, we will adjourn to executive session.